All right. Want to call the capital improvements, uh, project committee, uh, meetings in order on February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. It is seven oh two P M. Thereabouts. We do have a forum, I believe, of five. Uh, Karen and Jim and everybody else is sitting here.
And Melissa.
Yep. Oh, yeah, most of them. Yep. So, uh, so that is good and we can take votes if need be. First item on the list was, uh, present to speak. Uh, is there anybody out there present to speak that wants to, uh?
Hi, Mike McCune here. I'm A.
Hi, Mike.
Hi, um, just wanted to let you know I'm here representing Willington Hill Fire Department. If there are topics during the course of the evening that need, uh, Fire Department conversation, um, I'm here.
Thank you. For the record, despite my uniform, I'm not being paid by the Fire Department to be here tonight. I'm taking vacation time to do this. So go on to the, Phil, do you want to speak later or now?
Yeah, I'll wait till you get to that.
Hey, Steve, before we get into the bulk of this, can I make a motion to kind of add an item at the end of the agenda for future meetings and next steps? Cause we are currently on our last scheduled meeting.
Yes, so.
And we should talk about what we do.
Um, actually, Christina did file an agenda for next Wednesday already with the town clerk.
Okay.
Just in case we did go on, let's hope. So that one is, uh, scheduled, but I know we're under the gun to get the, uh, at least year one done for the selectmen tonight. Uh, if at all possible, um, so they can move forward with what they have to do with it. If we don't get through the out years and we want to have another meeting next week, we can do that.
We can hold it until next week.
Depends how early you want to, uh, leave tonight versus having another meeting another day.
I just want to make sure we're covered. We have availability if things come up.
Yep. So Christina did file the agenda for next week as well.
Yes.
More people to let in.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody out there in the field for president to speak other than Mike McCune? All righty, approval events, uh, you should, at the very least, have a paper copy of the minutes. They're obviously very detailed. Didn't know if anybody noticed any changes that needed to be made on the heads.
If I could find it, I did have a couple, but I can't find it. Hold on. Yeah, a couple of comments. So, um, just on the first page, it lists, uh, members that were people in attendance. And Paul Chief Moore, Mike was representing Willington Hill and Phil was here from schools. Ralph, I, I don't believe spoke, but I don't know whether, no offense to Ralph, um, and no, but I don't know whether he needs to be called out or we also say mention the public presence. It's a silly little point, but.
Well, let me see, is Ralph, what, what do you can? I thought it's on Bob and he's in there.
I just, I understand identifying people representing, you know, we believe that we're in the budget, but we're going to call out one member of the public. We should call out every member of the public or the other way around.
Okay.
I don't think I had anything to say at that last meeting.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Ralph.
I could have, but I didn't.
Yeah, well, you'll have a chance tonight. So, uh, in case we'll strike Ralph Phillips off the, uh, kind of list of members that were here last week because there were other members of the public that will show up on the minutes further down.
One other comment that's probably worth noting on page seven, uh, right before the library header. The paragraph, um, and we're going to get into the discussion night, which is why I say you should mention it. Um, the last sentence on that is when the funds are being appropriated, not spent, is not what I recall that this, there was confusion as about what it is, but it's. Let me read this again before I, because I only highlighted it. Okay, so Ms. Christina explained that they can equalize it for each year or leave it as it was presented. It is when the funds are being appropriated, not spent. The funds in year one is not when they're being appropriated. I guess there's a clarification there, page seven.
Yes.
There was a discussion about the school funds, the money are going to be spent versus wanting to show them in our plan, year one versus year three. That last sentence is not accurate and it may, I. Anybody else have recollection of it?
I recall you, I think I mentioned that in general, county principals, you can do it on a strict cash basis. Which case you're clearly right that it's all on the cash goes out is when you spend it. But, um, more of an accrual basis, which involves pending income and expenses that you know is going to be happening. You can do all your books based on that because you do have, and that typically applies to what I would call more complicated financial. You know, if you had a, if you had a candy store, you wouldn't worry so much for years in advance that you got to do something. You just deal with the cash you have and the expenses you paid. And where this is being set, the whole, and it's not the right term for set aside.
Yeah, I'm not arguing, I'm, I'm, I'm not arguing the whole point of this argument that, that it's not. It's incorrectly captured. I guess some minutes don't capture it accurately.
Well, I, I, are you talking about the one point five for this upcoming year for year one?
No, I'm talking about it as a specific sentence that it's going to be too hard to explain without reading.
Which sentence is it exactly?
Last sentence, it is when the funds are being appropriated, not spent.
It is when the funds are being appropriated, not spent.
This is a discussion about.
So this is all about.
The discussion we had about whether or not the funds are actually being appropriated in year one or year three for the school projects. And the paragraph with that last sentence is just confusing, but it's, um, we're probably already spent more time talking about it than it warrants it, but.
Phil, as part of the commitment to either these grants or state reimbursement, is the term that the money needs to be appropriated before you can go further down the road with that? It needs to be.
You have to have a town vote.
Right, we have to go through the other steps, but in terms of that needs to be done in show commitment to the state or the grant people that you have the rest of the money.
That you have the, that you're going to give to the, the public.
Right, so, so we took all roof on and put it in year three on this plan would probably mess up your grant applications and such.
What is funny is no, if, if the town still voted for it, even if you didn't, I mean, the town could vote for a billion dollar building. And if they voted yes, the state's not going to come and look at us. Do you have to verify that you have funds on it? Or do they just look at the town approval, which I mean, it's a little quirky, but you see what I'm saying?
I thought we had to have the funds in our budget.
I would expect that, but I don't think the town checks your bank statement.
Right.
They just say you're approving a, uh, a two million dollar project or a five hundred thousand dollar project or whatever it is. Town is approving it and they expect that based upon approval you have the funding for.
Um, I think this is an interesting conversation and it's a little bit above my head, but I feel like if we're talking about appropriate versus spend. It sounds like we should have some clarity about that, like that what's best practice? Is it best practice to make sure that we have every single bond in the bank account? Is it best practice to have the town's approval and understand that where the money is coming from? Like, I feel like room for some kind of.
Well, historically, the out years, the years two through five are not committed projects. They're not approved. Yes, they are a part of the plan. The plan gets accepted as a whole, but there's no cash movement at any point until we get to year three.
So here, here's the cash. The funds will be in there for the budget. The town to withdraw those funds still has a vote. So you have a project, gotta go before the town accesses those funds anyway. So if you, but does that have to happen? When does that have to happen? Is the question. Spend the funds? Yeah, because you're not going to be. It's when you award it.
So are you asking how long he has to spend the money when he hasn't? Is that the question?
No, I'm, I'm trying to get clarification on how we track this. Basically, that was the whole discussion back then. Uh, but we're deviating, we can discuss it, I think, as a part of the meeting, we're deviating from the, the minutes at this point, you know, and having a full flip.
Well, I think, okay.
So I can, I'll, we'll leave that.
Well, let's, we've got a sentence where it is right now and, uh, let's, uh, entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Do you have any other questions?
No, that's it.
Anybody else have any questions to minutes? Okay, I entertain a motion to accept the minutes for February twenty first, twenty twenty four.
Move to accept the minutes of February. I can't remember this.
Twenty first, seven, sorry.
Twenty first.
Motion, do I have a second?
I second it.
All in favor, say aye to approve the minutes.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, so we get ways in favor and they, did they hear? Okay, we got that out of the way for now. Um, we can kind of continue this discussion, uh, item four in the agenda, C I P plan year one. So that's what we're kind of talking about. Right now, um, the spreadsheet we're looking at, which has been in the same format for probably as long as Don has been around, many, many years. Is a planning spreadsheet. It's not a it's not meant to document future projects and actual expenditures. There are other financial reports that come through and of course are, uh, checked by the auditor and all that fun stuff. Of, uh, documenting what money went where, why, what's it being held for? There's other reporting mechanisms further on that I think will do what you want it to do. This document.
Is so that we can plan and see where we anticipate those funds being and we'll have actual reporting later.
And that's where the, uh, the fund balance sheet comes in. Which I'm typically the addition you may see in, let's call it very broad terms. You know, you had roughly a million dollars to start fiscal year. Let's say we have the one point five, one point four, whatever it is. Next, you'll see that fund balance increasing. And then let's say the expenditures are going to be mostly in year three. You'll see the expenditure, the, the expenditures in year three on the fund balance sheet, dropping that balance back down again.
Yeah, so there are a couple of pretty, what I think are important points on this. And if I can figure out how to share a screen, I'm going there. Exit into my video, it's my first level. So, thank you, got to do something. Thank you.
Yep, hit the window.
All right, so just so. Minimize. All right, this is what we're talking about, right?
Yes.
All right, go away. There we go. So there are a couple of points here and specific to that. So we have the fund balance projected at the end of this current year. It's what we're planning on have is in fund O four, capital reserve fund, one million, three hundred eighty seven thousand, two hundred eighty four dollars, right? Year one as currently tracked. It's adding one point five million essentially. To that total, that's available on July first, twenty twenty four. So that account should be, there's going to be almost three million dollars in that account. Or in total in that account. Year one, if we capture those expenditures in year one, it's falsely depleting our balance. We're not spending that money in year one. Those projects for the schools are anticipated as a year three expense. So there should be, at the end of year one. Uh, it's not all school projects, but it's, um, there's quite a bit of school projects in there. At the end of year one, we actually are going to be left with like two point eight million dollars. Which is going to be sitting there accruing interest, can be sitting there accruing interest. I don't know what type of account we have this sitting in currently, but if he's not touching it for two years, and this is where our conversation with Phil from a, from a cash flow planning perspective. Say there's two hundred, two point five million in the account. We save five hundred thousand for the chimney and incidental stuff in case you need it, you know, over the next year. Yeah. The balance stays in the fund. That's two million dollars we can tie up in a C D or a high yield savings account. Getting way more interest than we're going to get in a standard savings account. I don't know. Now, to the tune of, if you can get four point five percent on half, it's a hundred thousand dollar a year. That should be reflected in this and, and we can start to plan for it as well.
So if I understand this under general reserve expenditures, year one, where it's kind of listed as two point five three nine million.
And that.
That should go at the very least to year two, if not year three.
That goes.
For the bulk of it.
That goes back to it. So for example, if you do this, here, I'm going to go, here's table two, for example, this is the way we currently have this set up. All right, so here are your numbers in, in yellow, if you can see these.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So this is as a current stance and this number is really one point three eight, should be one point five three one. So you push that out. Let's just do this. Sorry, this is a very small monitor, we're doing some search. And then, for example, this goes up to year three, right? And I cross track all these. That's what happens to your balances. It's not till the end of year three that that fund is depleted. And this is actually kind of inaccurate because the reality is at the start of year three, we have three point one six plus one point six one two. So that account should have four point seven million.
I would tell you, have it in the fund, but it's not available for spending because it is allocated to Phil and the board of ed.
Correct.
And it's misleading because if somebody, there's an emergency and somebody goes to the reserve to see what's available. And you look at your spreadsheet and you see your number, that's how, how would you know that that's allocated to Phil?
Correct. And so I think we should be separating these as that, we should also probably track school fund account and general capital.
And this isn't the only project that spans multiple years. There's been other projects that have been delayed one or two years. As well, so it's not unique to the school of not spending some money, but knowing it's tied up to be spent for a certain project.
But, but to the point, it's still in the account.
Does it need?
If it's tied up.
Does it need, does it need another line? Item of, uh, you know, I don't know what you'd exact called committed expenditures or something like that where you're, you're documenting as part of that balance or maybe.
I think we need a June thirtieth and a July one, you know, number at the start of that, just so that you can kind of see, but I, this is your.
Okay, as long as everybody understands, so.
Exactly. I think as I mentioned last meeting, you've got to make sure it's not a free for all. If somebody says, oh, there's lots of money in that account, let's go, uh, do some better.
Um, I'm just a little concerned about making major, uh, to the way that tracking a son without the chair person, no offense to our being here. Um, I feel like this is something that maybe maybe does need to happen, but not here. Like I, 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 we're here to talk about year one as it's currently constituted.
Where it's be correct.
Right. And so doing that doesn't doesn't affect all of the other stuff that you're talking about.
But it does.
And I provide some historical information on this?
I just need to, I just need to finish my sentence. Um, I, I feel like the, now I forgot what I was going to say. Go ahead.
Sorry. Um, some historical perspective on this, uh, Jim's point is, is a very valid point. And we have wrestled with this exact question before on C I P, um, in my past time on C I P. And, um, one of the things we realized we needed to do was we needed to define the line where we were moving over into financial planning. And it's very easy because of the projects we're trying to wrestle with in C I P crossing over years. And to, to step sort of out of what C I P's real purpose is. Um, and, and this is one of those areas where it's easy to go over that line. How the accounts are maintained, um, how the money is invested or reserved, that's financial policy. That's the finance department. That's the taxpayers with, um, you know, uh, ordinances, perhaps, things like that. Um, addressing the concern in C I P is really good. Um, but it's not really C I P's job to figure out how the finance office will manage the containers of the funds. Once C I P puts together a suggested plan to the selectman, um, you know, which is another thing that's hard for C I P to remember in all the years I was on it. Is that it's an advisory committee to the selectman. It's a plan. Um, it, it doesn't set policy.
Yep, correct. And you can recommend that plan.
Right, yes, but it's not, financial policy is not.
Yeah, we're not making a policy, but this is the budget, this is the, the five year plan that we're presenting to the board of finance and the board of selectmen saying this is, this board, this committee. Our committee's best effort at balancing the budget, because right now, looking at this. We have a capital group of funds, seven point four million dollars in the hall on year five. I cannot put forth a plan that says we're going to be seven point four million dollars in the hall on year five. It's not going to happen. We need to come up with a way of presenting a plan to the board of finance for their review and the board of selectmen that is achievable, you know, otherwise we're just passing the buck. It's, and that's, that's, I also have a big concern about the year one versus year two through five debate, because this is a full plan. Every time we look at year one in isolation. It passes the buck again because nobody wants to deal with anything down the line. We just pushed up out the future years. We are presenting an entire plan as to how to fund projects we think are critical over the next five years.
So I, I don't agree with you. I think that year one is the job that we're here to do. And I feel like the subsequent meetings that we should be having for C I P are the times that we have those conversations about years two through five. So that we're not, Jim, you can disagree, but let me finish.
Go ahead. I apologize.
The years two through five are possibly, if we start the process earlier and have the conversations about two through five before February or January. Then we have a better chance of doing what you're asking us to do. But in, on February, whatever the heck date this is today, it's not the time to do it. When, when Pete is banging at our door to get year one done, that needs to be done thoughtfully and mindfully as best as we can. And then two through five, hopefully we can figure out what to do with those in a planful manner, maybe starting in a month or two.
So I, I, I.
You, you mentioned about the plan falling apart, so to speak, in year three. And that's primarily due to the five point two million for board of ed projects. And it currently listed as going to, you know, fund for the general reserve. Realistically. I do not foresee a passable tax increase to that level. Right, so if you do the bond, not only does that probably push the payment out another year, if a bond were to take place and pass. Um, it then spreads those payments out. So even though, yes, it is five point two million plus interest and fees.
I.
And stuff like that, but you're not spending five point two million of taxpayer money from general reserve in year three.
Agreed. So, but that, so to Jen's point, before we go down the rabbit hole of, you know, our job right on the website is to maintain all capital assets, including buildings that are constructed to meet future demands. Just avoiding deterioration and costly maintenance requirements, threatening interruption of cancerism, decline in community and stagnation, community to govern the whole. That's, that's, that's our job. And then it says within anticipated, in, within anticipated levels of financial resources available. That is not our job to determine. We prejudge this, trying to cut this down in year one. And it's really a board of finances decision. Our job is to present a comprehensive plan that addresses the needs to prevent deterioration. You can say it's years two through five, don't matter, but let's go through the list. We should know every, every committee in this town, every board in this town does this. They go through this list during budget season, they present a board of, of budgets of the board of finance that's been vetted. Or at least that's been reduced to what they think they essentially need to survive. We have a thirty million dollar capital improvement plan here over five years. That's in the hole in year three by millions of dollars, the way we currently have this presented. I cannot say that we've done our job unless we vet it that each of these are warranted as submitted. I mean, go down this list and tell me, did any of you guys see anything in this list?
Look, let's go back to the way we used to do this.
Well, that's not work.
No, the way we used to do it, and we didn't do it this year, is we simply go down year one. The two through five is another discussion. You got to start somewhere. Year one is it, year one is what needs to be, recommendation needs to be submitted to the selectmen. So what we've done in the past is you simply go down these projects and we can kind of walk the, uh, the first one together, which is kind of the, uh, the roof and ventilation, uh, project for the schools. And I think we've beat that number to death, you know, based on a recommendation from the superintendent of how much money, um, it needs to do with that, along with the two small projects of, uh, plumbing for forty thousand and the carpet for twenty four thousand.
That's our call, so she knows. And so we can at least look at it together.
So if we look at that, the school projects, what the board of ed, which is lines, uh, seven through seventeen. And that's, in essence, there's three projects there, the plumbing, the carpet, and the overall roof and ventilation progress, uh, and the solar panels. So.
So if I may, Steve, and not to cut you off, but like year one, what we do in year one impacts how things look in year two and three and what, how we plan in years two through five. So if we, since then we have a hole in year three, we can start to address that in year one and we should be factoring that into the discussion in year one. And doing things like some of the things we've done in here. Where we've reduced the goal of, of adding, so we're including money for the, for the school. Because we need to capitalize on the grants, but we reduce the general reserve, the transfer to the reserve fund or for other projects down to thirty one thousand dollars. That is again, shortchanging every chance we have of getting ahead of the game. And I'm talking about this cell right here, sorry. That by rights would be five hundred and six thousand dollars with the temporary increases board has done historically. The one point five billion dollars of the schools is to, because we're so far behind, it's trying to get ahead. I have a big problem with reducing that, even though I know that's going to be a huge number in feet's budget and it sucks that we have to raise, that, that it's going to wind up being a tax increase. But to try to balance year one so that we have a pretty picture for the selectman's budget, doesn't do anything to address the need that we have in this town over the next five years.
But we also, for this year one, we in essence need five hundred thousand dollars increase to cover the school roof credit. That has to come from somewhere.
Correct. That's it.
So, so, so. See, which is typically not putting the money into the reserve, it's kind of a longer term savings aspect and setting aside that money for the budget.
It's, but it's not, you can't, it's like, you get ahead of us, we are that far behind this, my dear.
So I don't know that we have, and I know you don't like to hear this, Jim, and I, I hear myself saying it, it's cringy a little bit, but quite honestly, this is a conversation. If we could go back in time, should have happened a long time ago. And it should have happened maybe in a strategic planning committee or some other place that's not here. This it's, it's not, it's not ideal, Jim. It's not, and it's not for going to be ideal. There's no way that you can make a, a five year plan not messy in a town that has budgets, that has emergencies, that has tax increases, whatever. I don't know how else to say it. Like, I don't, I.
And I, I think we knew, I'll say I knew, when the potential school replacement, uh, was voted down or major renovations, whichever way you want to look at that one, when that didn't happen, we knew this was coming. The, the board event is held out for years doing some, if not all of these projects. Now that we know that we cannot commit to a new school, these have to be done and it's going to be paying to be made everywhere. And we're, you know, historically we would put, uh, you know, more transfer to the capital reserve fund, you put four hundred and eighty thousand in. But you might spend a lot of that out of capital. But you might spend a lot of that out of capital reserve as to year one on using that as refunding source.
But the goal here is we we have leases, we wanna cut down back on leasing every piece of equipment, because we're hemorrhaging money and interest. We wanna try to reduce the cost, and all a whole big part of the debate about the schools as well was. Look, we're spending this much money in interest on this huge bond, we should start to put savings aside so that we cannot. So we can save this money, it was Christina's point a lot, and in a lot of discussions that were had last year. That we need to start saving and budgeting to get on top of this demand. Reducing this number right there doesn't do that. The the schools have a tremendous need, and we need to do this as well. But shortchanging this and doing other things, for example, like paying for these at a fund seventeen. These are not equipment, well, for one, this, I'm gonna argue. The turnout gear is a budgetary item and should be pulled off of this budget, because it's a recurring budget thing, I think that's where that's going for it finance. But the parking lot replacement is being paid for at a fund seventeen, that's not a vehicle replacement, that's not equipment replacement. That should become out of feet's budget. That's a capital expenditure. But we're playing with the numbers to make year one look rosy for everybody. This is where it's frustrating, the other part of this too, and again, going back to this, we're not expending this money in year one. So despite it's not being committed to these, well, is it being committed to these projects? What do you need for, I I'll ask you the question, what do you need to commit to these projects? Because it it factors into what the board of finance does and how this board, right, how this committee kind of plans down the road.
I can answer a couple of things for you, so one, the the. The questions that have to go when you go to town meeting are, there's four. And the resolutions, one is you have to have a building committee, when it's a roof project, it can be your board of ed, it doesn't have to be like a building committee like we have. The second question um, is to prepare schematic drawings and specifications for a roof project, or whatever that project is. The third question is um, authorizing me, and I'm the only person that can do it, is is to um, write the grant. That's the third question, and then the fourth question is, this is the one you're getting at. To see if the townspeople on the recommendation of the board of finance will authorize the appropriation of X dollars. From what account, the capital reserve fund for the school partial roof replacement project. That is the statement that has to be in uh, the town resolution.
So. Even if we allocate and spend this year, is this gonna work for your grants? Because you're not doing any of those things this year.
So you'd be working towards it, you're not necessarily spending those funds this year.
So I guess can to my question, but I'm not sure if I have a definitive answer on this. If we say we're making a transfer to the school, whatever it is, capital reserve fund to school projects, or. These following projects in year one, even if they're not being allocated. In year one, because you're not, you're not doing any of this work in year one.
Doesn't say what year it's happening in, when you do the question, it's the monies, you've got the money in a, you'll have it in a quote unquote, school account. Even though there's not really such a thing, right, Donna, there's no school account. It's just we're calling it the million dollars is the school account. The one point five is gonna make it two point five, right? When it goes to town meeting, it's gonna be specific to project and specific to account. The account that's gonna be tied to is the quote unquote, school fund. So that's what has to be in the language for the approval to apply for the grants.
But you're, so you have to go to town meeting.
Yes.
To apply for.
To apply for the grant.
Correct.
And to get the.
Are you doing that this year?
No.
So that's my point.
I I, well, I should say, no, I don't know that. It depends on, actually, yes, it's H VAC grant, it's it's, the H VAC grant is up, yes. The roofs, no, probably not, and you'll have to have enough of the H VAC funding. And now this is, this is my point, is that based upon, thi- this is gonna throw you for a loop, so it's.
You're appropriating, not spending.
Correct.
Sitting there, but already appropriated.
Correct, Jim, but this is, this is gonna throw you a little bit for a loop, because this is what's in the statutory language. Is, and this is about the H VAC grant. Um, projects must be completed by the end of the next calendar year following the year of grant commitment. Right, so if you get grant commitment in the uh, spring of um. Twenty five. You have one year to do it, which means the. Spring of twenty six, during school.
Yes.
Unless they change that statutory language, which this one right now says, for example, a project that receives a grant commitment in March of twenty four. Must be completed by December thirty first, twenty twenty five, they added time, even though that's not what they said in their example, it's interesting. So my, and this is what I'm, what, I I'll kind of answer your question about. Um, the end of your last meeting was that is the one point five million enough? And with the board pitched it as a minimum, and this is kind of how I see it. Is that when I did the the our rough estimates with Donna, for what you have currently in year one. Was two point three million dollars total. With an assumption that H VAC projects were one million at center and two million at hall. What I will tell you, and this goes to your point, Jim, is that with that money in there. You probably could tie some of it up or recommend you tie some of it up to earn interest. You couldn't do it all, though, because some of that work is going on, and this is kind of how I look at. Is that if you had uh, two point five million, I think we spent thirty thousand on a two point five million, I'm just gonna call it two point five million. The one million currently there, plus the one point five, you have two point five. You would have about six point five million dollars worth of projects of local share money. After state reimbursement. So if you take six point five million, you say we're sixty three percent, thirty seven percent of the local share is that two point five million. So between roofs and HVAC, that's a lot of money. Why do I share that? Because what could happen, we have a lot happening, uh, and I'm not the only, you know, program in this. You know, this this kitchen right now, obviously, the fire department has this, you know, big projects in there too. Is that I think within twelve months of when you're sitting here again, the conversation is gonna be different. You are gonna be talking about bonding, I don't know that you're gonna solve that problem right now this year. And that's where. Big picture wise, like, we're gonna have a facility study in the next, I hope, six weeks finalized. With updated numbers for the board event. Could have very different recommendations in it, right? Um, you're going to have um. You're, which means you'll have more accurate accurate pricing, you'll have more accurate information on HVAC grants as they come through. So we hear December of, you know, of twenty four, I've heard summer of twenty four. When's it actually gonna happen? So it's like, we're, we might need to start moving some of these things, we'll have an O P M on board. Right, um, we could still apply for the HVAC grant as long as it wasn't more. Than six point five million dollars. Saying we had our local share. Because it's in the cost.
Yes.
We couldn't apply for the roof grant at that time, but there's time to do that, because that's a rolling, every month you can do that. So like, time wise, timeline wise, it would work. What that would just mean is you'd be planning for a bond in year one next year. And that would be, could be a big bond, some for school, some for fire, some for whatever roads, whatever it may be. And then that would spread out your now, that would create your or solve your problem of the how we pay for years two through five. Because that's historically where you've always been stuck. We've only gotten five hundred thousand dollars in, three hundred thousand is eaten up in leases, and then you're stuck. And so I understand your point to get ahead, I don't think you're gonna do that this year. I think as you get more information, I know it kills you, because you're gonna spend more interest, but it's gonna happen next year. And you'll have the information, you know, as far as the HVAC grant timeline, you'll have the ability to bond. Um, you'll have more accurate prices, both fire department side and board of ed side. Right now, the the two point five million target for me is it gives us a shot. At applying for HVAC grant, which is, has potential for drying up. That's me is is the reason why that's there. Anything more than that, I think starts to choke out the taxpayer for how much they could afford, and you're. You know, you make that recommendation, you could make a recommendation for to put four million dollars in. But you would know that they would have to bond that, Donna knows, you'd have to bond that. So I think that's my point of, you know, what you, what on the board of ed side. Where where we put in the one point five million as a minimum, knowing that there's big buffers in years that are out.
Yeah, I I I I mean, but that's the similar, but again. I agree, I agree with your logic there completely, I'm trying to get an understanding of where. Of of the phasing of this, because it it changes, and it's ultimately gonna change the tax impact down the line, there's there's, with the year you bond.
Yeah.
Is gonna be a big one, um, you know, you have what, it's six point five inch or, what did you just say for the total roof? HVAC.
Two point five.
No, it's half before.
Oh, oh, yeah, six point five million would be the cap if you got everything reimbursed.
So for that, I mean, we have an eleven point five million bond here, I'm just trying to be devil's advocate, play the math here, like, if we. It's factored in, I can just change this twenty three million, if we're assuming we're bonding the schools at the same time.
Good.
And this becomes one point nine. Uh, how many more zeros? Sorry, very small screen, so now look at what this number does. This is such a a manual.
It'd be how you how you would build out your years two through five.
Yeah.
You've never had a solution for, and it's not your fault, you've never had a funding solution for years two through five. Unless you had a bond, right, the library is a prime example of that. You have a bond and you're know the total cost of a project, and you're paying for over multiple years because you have a bond.
Yes.
In the absence of a bond, the only real money that exists on your plan is year one. And until you bond something. Like you could make, you have a commitment in something for a lease, right, you have a commitment to that, you can't break that, that's the only other thing. So you have to fund that in years two through five, everything else that's not lease based is a decision you make. Right?
Right, whether to go back to the local taxpayer for an increase.
Right.
Um, wh- what I'm looking at on the roof project uh, is we need to get you moving on that.
Right.
That that's the priority, you know, obviously, the roof project can be put off for a variety of reasons over the last few years. Schools need a roof, and it makes sense to do the ventilation at the same time.
Right.
We have, we can't install it, oh, let's do another year, we'll make to a bond next year for you, and then you get pushed out, and we said some of the reimbursements may go away. We need to set aside that money, so you can move ahead and make all the applications you need to make this happen.
Right.
And.
And in all honesty, if if the HVAC comes back ten million dollars, you all may go, forget it. We have to do something else, and the roof projects have just happened on their own, right? The money is there to do the roof projects, and let's face it, the two point five billion, even if you put one point five in this year. The two point five there is not to go to waste, we know based upon the seventy projects that the board of ed submitted. It's gonna be spent, it would be, it would just be the roof projects first, and then you chip away at other projects.
But but that's kind of my point, and the money is there, you know, like, so. Again, to reducing the local funds, again, the fire stations, we know there's a project, many of us here disagree that. There's a pro- some project at station one, I don't care about the dollar amount, they're saying it's three point one million dollars. Why aren't we, and. We don't know where that's gonna go, but is it smart to plan for that now? Do we plan for what a bond payment would be on a three point one in budget for that in year one? So that it's available, if it pushes out to you too, the money is still there, it's a shock absorber for the fire stations. And I hate that term, because it's not a shock absorber, it's just planning for future expenditures. For future mandatory expenditures, if I know my car's gonna go, I save for it in advance and hope the hell that it doesn't die on me in the in the in the meantime. Why are we not, we just keep pushing things out?
I just, uh, one, one of the things that I think our our role is to hear. Departments present the things that they need, it's not our job to do it for them, I feel like. Okay, Jim, part of our job is to help them to to see a bigger picture. And we've talked to Troy, you know, he just sticks out in my mind, about D P W, ten years on the road, not just five. And as I said last week, we've had these conversations about strategic planning, those are where those conversations should happen, like. We've had two different conversations about years two through five tonight, y- your conversation is we should have every penny documented in a tree, solid as a rock. To hand to the board of selectmen. Phil's discussion.
It should be.
It should be, no. Every year, every year, things get switched around, they get moved around based on the town's current need.
We don't address it.
So so Jim, you don't let anybody else have an answer, I, we talked about. Voting on year one in in the most effective and efficient way we can. Continuing to meet as a C I P or whatever other committee you wanna call it, to talk about years two through five, to talk about big projects, talk about townwide stuff. It, whatever it is, the the C I P has a process, and if if it's not okay with you, I don't know what to say.
I I, what I don't understand is how you, like, I can't vote for a year one budget when we're three million dollars, I'm like, in the negative. On year three, I can't do it, I can't sweat my name saying voting positively for something that does, that falls apart on year three. Our job is to come up with a plan to present to the board of finance, and we say this is the best. We have based on what we've identified, we've identified, these are the needs. Unless you have a project in here you wanna throw out because you don't think it's valid, I have a couple that I think we could push out the beyond year five. Well, and that is a part of the conversation we need to have too.
What would you change in year one tonight?
I would fund for what the need at station one is, a bond payment. To have us covered as a shock absorber, I'm a B shock, I hate that term, as a shock absorber, it's gonna be whatever, we have three point one for the roads, right? What is that bond, what is that lease payment? Two hundred.
A three million dollar bond.
Yeah, it's in here.
Which is what the library is, would have for twenty years, would have a principal payment of a hundred and fifty thousand. Plus a little more for interest.
Interest.
So let's figure two hundred thousand dollars for a bond payment. For a three million dollar bond.
And that's just budgeting for it, because we know we're gonna need it, if not this year, by the end of the year.
And.
Where is that two hundred thousand coming from?
It's gotta come from, exactly.
It's gotta come from.
It's gotta come from the selected, it's gotta, it's gonna be taxes, yeah, it's gonna be an increase in taxes.
Okay.
So coupled with the five hundred thousand.
Correct.
Increase for the board event to get the roof done.
Correct.
Try to do another two hundred on top of that, and I think, you know, Christina certainly expressed some concerns of. Year one is not the time to do the bond for the firehouse, that the costs are too um. Totally up in the air, let alone the design of it, and.
I agree, this is budgeting for it, because we're gonna have a project at station one, do you disagree, we're gonna have a project at station one? Is there a project there, I don't know how much it is, but I'm I'm basing on what Jen said, that I'm going by what they presented, I think they have about a three point one million dollar. Ask in that eleven point five million dollar bond, maybe I'm a little light, but. And they have it submitted as a year one cost.
Donovan, the only way to balance it in other years is to either remove a project.
We have more projects than money, or we have to bond and have a bond payment.
So those are really your two options.
Yes.
To balance your all the plan.
So we we have to make.
On payment in or to remove project.
But it has to be a permanent removal, just pushing out of a year or two or three or four. Delays the project, increase the cost, as you mentioned, so if you look at this uh. List of expenditures, well, you know, I'll throw it out, the Lisko Road Bridge, you vote never to do it? That's the only way to save money on the plan, but.
I agree, I I I, what I, what I'm arguing is, we have, there are a couple in here that I'd say we can cut out over the five year period. It it makes a minimal difference. At the point, yes, we have, these are all, by and large, these are projects that are valid, that need to happen to be standing. That's what we need to agree. Then it's like, this is to the board of finance, this is how bad it is. This is how we see a way, a path forward, but yes, it sucks. Like, how, I I I I don't wanna raise taxes, I don't wanna do any of this, I don't wanna be here saying this, it sucks, I I hate.
And and ultimately, this needs to pass muster with the taxpayers this year. And to add another two hundred thousand dollar bond payment or whatever it would be to a project that. You know, we don't have cost estimates for, or even, you know, looking at the bigger picture of, you know, who should get one, where and how. Uh, to say we need two hundred thousand from from you this year for a bond payment, then we're probably not gonna bond for two or three years.
And next year, we're. And next year, we're gonna need another bond payment. And the year after that, we're getting future taxes again, because that's what this plan balances at.
Speak, Jim, speak to um the point that Phil made about the year one um. Being kind of as it is and then having a discussion about bonding for next year. How is that? I I don't understand how that's not a solution to the problem. It's maybe not a great solution, but it is a solution.
Because they have been identified needs. Station one is falling apart. They cannot occupy the building. There is a project there. We need to plan for it. We can push it out a year. That's fine. You wanna increase taxes next year? A hundred, I think their need is gonna be more urgent than that.
So I.
But that's my opinion. We don't all have to agree. That's fine. There, they need to do something.
But that's on, that's on them to figure that out and then present it to us and have a conversation about it and figure out how to pay for it.
Three point one, whatever their request was as part of an eleven point five million dollar bond. They presented it to us. That is on the table. That has been this plan. They presented it as year one. It got moved to year two before we even talked about it by Christina, but it was a year one request. We're ignoring it, just it it delays, makes it worse for us in the long run.
So I I you keep saying that, Jim, and I understand that. I get the fact that. If you push things off, they get more expensive, they get more broken. Uh, you're not the only person who knows that on this table, but we're here to talk about year one and I keep saying that and. We have to figure something out and we also have to make it. I know this doesn't sound good, but it has to be palatable to the taxpayers. If if we recommend a budget to the to the board of selectmen that has a.
You're prejudging what the taxpayers want.
Jim, I'll just not talk anymore.
Well, I mean, we can, how is it a conversation if we sit there and we go down like I'm having, I'm trying to have a conversation?
You are not.
Okay. We're prejudging what the taxpayers want.
You didn't let me finish, Jeff.
You weren't talking just now.
Okay, uh, Stuart, whatever you have to.
Stand up, try to finish.
I'm all set.
Uh, do we prejudge what the taxpayers will do? We take an educated guess based on history and how much can we get away with, so to speak, and and not that it's. Bad thing, but we need a certain level of funding to do projects and it goes back to those projects. How can you get those projects done? The roof project at the school is a priority for the town as a whole. And we knew it was coming and we need to make it happen. And that's an extra five hundred thousand bucks going towards, you know, over the above what. And this is our capital spending is annually, especially going towards the school and. That's a big ask of the taxpayers, where especially when capital expenditures were down to five and six hundred thousand dollar. Side of things. And we made a big increase last year and, you know, another five hundred thousand this year. I want the budget to pass. Is it doesn't do for especially even out of planning purpose, it doesn't do anybody anything to make a project. As much financial sense as it may make if it's gonna fail. I'm guessing the taxpayers are not gonna wanna. pony up another two, three, four hundred thousand dollars to fix things, the total money capital reserve to try to get off leases. And pay for stuff directly. Um, there's a, and there's only really one source of income and that's taxpayers. And as much as, you know, you love to pay for a car and a taxi, uh, if you don't have the income. All one year to do that or a couple years to try to save up. And you still need that vehicle, you have to lease it. It's the only way to spread those payments out.
I'll I'll pitch my hand. I don't wanna step on it.
Go ahead.
We're not asking the taxpayer to put an extra five hundred thousand dollars because we withdrew it from our other requests. We're balancing it out so that this number, we added five hundred thousand to the school, but then we took it away from our regular. Deposit with the ten percent increase into the bond, so it didn't show up to the taxpayer. We're not doing anything to get ahead with this plan. And I get that and I I understand that. This is a crappy situation. We're also not being honest with the texture. We tell them, oh, we found year one, we got it to balance. But we're not gonna do, we can't afford to do half of the projects we have on this list. We're not presenting a plan to the board of finance that makes any sense. This is a full, we are presenting a complete picture to the board of finance. If we don't do that, it's, we might not as well, we might as well not. There's, there's literally no point in us having these discussions anymore if we're not looking at this. Saying here, this is what we feel the need is. It's up to you guys to figure out how we're gonna pay for it. This is what we think is the most efficient way to do that.
Uh, yes, you hear me now?
Yeah.
So I um kind of understand where Jim's coming from because being new to CIP. And seeing how, you know, with me being on CIP for years and seeing how everything works with the five year plan. And usually years two through five or year, usually the four or five, you know, they're like crazy. And they don't really, you know, they're not realistic. Um. It does suck since these numbers aren't like actually accurate as far as, you know, what we're gonna be spending as a town. Um, so I understand his point. I was just curious as to what else he would put in year one um to make it. You know, help. The years one through five out.
I think whether we put it in year one or year two, we're gonna have the bond for the fire stations for at least station one. I think we need to plan for it. If we wanna put it in year two, fine, let's put it in year two. I'm tired of having this this debate um. Quite frankly, um, I think it's likely. That it would be advantageous that there's gonna be a project at station one. Within the next year. I think it's very possible. I think it could happen sooner than that. So need to, but the money will be there in year two and it's not a tax, it's not a bigger tax increase in year two. It's planning for something we know is gonna happen.
Okay, let's let's let me throw out an idea here that might be palatable. Instead of saying two hundred thousand towards a fire station. Project replacement, whatever you wanna call it, if we transfer to the capital reserve. In essence, that same amount like, uh, to moving two hundred thousand into capital reserve. Which then the following year would be, as you mentioned, the shock absorber, be it for the fire station payment. Or if there's something else comes up and the school had an emergency.
Well, this, this two hundred thousand wasn't for, it was like the emergencies to get them a plan, right? That's what we kind of settled on last last meeting. It's not. It's to do the larger study for them to figure out what they need essentially. It's funding to the emergency services committee. That is being established by Pete eventually. Moving that to the general fund means they have no funding to figure out what we need to really figure out in years, you know, two through five or whatever the case may be. All I'm saying is we know.
I wasn't, I wasn't talking about moving the two hundred out. I was talking about changing the thirty one thousand to, I'll start a number two hundred. To which would increase the bottom line on column Q from one point nine to two point one.
And I have another half millipede's budget.
Mm-hmm, and.
Well, we've just been arguing about whether we're gonna. I don't understand the rationale. I'm waiting, sorry.
The, I think the chairman mentioned that the uh local fund contribution for this uh year is at one point nine. And last year was just under one point eight, uh, so a hundred and something thousand dollars difference. If you look at column M total at the bottom versus column Q. Can we bump that up some, put it into the capital reserve to be that shock absorber for next year this? And uh and to and to go from there, yeah.
Just looking at the screen, this is this right here. I just made that what it was, what our standard ten percent increase was. The thirty one thousand can five oh six, which is what it would have been before it was reduced. Uh, going on a ten percent increase transfer to get ahead of capital projects. That brings the outlet to two point three seven eight million. Which is gonna be a one and a half mil increase in in taxes, which.
Which is just on the capital projects.
But look at it, you know, but then again, the next year when we're bonding for the fire stations. This plan currently shows that's gonna be another mil and a half to two mils. Cause the bond kicks out. In year three, we're saying there's gonna be a school bond. That's gonna be another million and a half. We're going up in taxes if you did not represent that. That's how we fund these projects. And if the taxpayers say we can't do this, then we're pulling projects. And but that's, you know. And that's, that's the reality. We can't sugarcoat it. We can't lie. We can't keep lying. Like, it's, it's, we're not trying to, but that's what pushing years out or ignoring years two through five is. We're not representing, this is where we're at. You know, it's like, it's a. It's fundamental fallacies to how this is presented and how we do, that how we approach this.
So.
Are they gonna vote yes in year one if they realize if we lie and say years two through five don't count?
Jim, I am not, I don't want to be characterized as someone who's lying. I don't.
Well, it's, I, I didn't mean it with any ill intent.
It's, the word is pretty, you know.
See, don't take this again. But then I'm telling you right now, that's clearly not where I was going, but we are not being transparent is all I'm trying to get at.
So we were, we were sitting at this table last week with Pete, who, one of the things that he said was. He's trying to reduce the budget by some amount. So before this even gets to him, he's trying to reduce the budget. So us discussing in the board of finance has zero appetite for any kind of. Raises in taxes or anything like that. So if we're doing this major overhaul to what we've been talking about. It requires some. It requires some finesse, some sales pitches, some helping um the. People in town to understand what we're going for. It has, it requires buy-in and also it requires. The down the road thinking that we, again, don't have time to do tonight. Like, we could, we can have twenty five hours of discussion about this, Jim, and I'm, I I know we could, but. We have to get this done. So I don't know what the solution is. I honestly don't.
So what is the urgency of this driving? Pete presents his budget to the board of, Pete Pete hasn't approved the selectmen's budget. He hasn't voted to send a. Selectmen's budget anywhere as to the best of my knowledge, right?
Right.
There's no reason he's not presenting a budget to the board of finances set in stone. He hasn't voted to move it to the board of finance. He doesn't meet again till the fifth. Christina doesn't present this till the fifteenth. We have weeks of time where we can actually work on this and come up with a plan. There's no urgency to do this tonight. It would be nice if it was that simple.
I thought Pete wanted it to Thursday.
Yeah, that's what I thought as well, but.
He might. I mean, it it would be great if he could represent that in his budget. But he started too late.
Well, well, but this could go on for.
Last year when we went back and we did the the school bond.
This this could go on for nights and nights and nights and, you know, the board of finances, Mike had mentioned, has some say in terms of. How this is reported, um, and it obviously needs to meet their approval and I'm not trying to. Give them an easy out for, you know, what CIP is, uh, but it is subject to change all down the road um.
So, I'll make this easy for you. What changes do you wanna make to this tonight? I cannot vote for it, but I will shut up without it.
I'll, I'll, I'll throw on two um.
Sorry, thank you, Phil. It's hard to.
I can't see what it is, but yeah.
Yeah, let me put this back because it's thrown all the numbers. This is thirty one thousand as it somehow reduced between what we talked to last week and now.
Yes, it reduced because Christina had a meeting with Peter.
That's it. Okay.
Then, um, line sixteen, year three, the five point two million for school projects. For the funding source listed is uh O four to the general reserve.
Uh, line sixteen. Going to school, sure, okay.
I I would change that to a bond. If at that point, you you need five point two million in the year.
Where you're doing now.
Uh, one, uh, row sixteen.
Right.
Uh, Z, uh, A A.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought we were talking year ones.
Yep, the F, the F zero four. I think uh John, Johnny does a B O, I think, for funding source for a bond.
Yeah, can I, can I make the suggestion? I would suggest, well, I don't know if we can, Phil, quite frankly, but I think you have a bond in your. Two or three. That's significant. I think, quite frankly, it's gonna wind up including all of these, all of this dollar amount too in year one.
Not a, we're gonna manage it. Doesn't matter where you put it, two through five. It doesn't matter because it's not real until it's real.
Yeah.
So as long as you represent a bond in any year, the balance what you have there, I think that's all that matters. Or all, any of the projects, because that's the only way you're gonna balance the projects that are on your screen.
So Donna and Jen's probably gonna say we shouldn't be talking about this, but but that's still my point with the fund balance. If we bond. Eleven million, one through three in year three, for example. This is a popping point. We have four point five million dollars in the fund, which. Doesn't need to go to bond, can keep us from bonding again after the two point eight million and the three point seven million and years four and five. We didn't, you hear what I'm saying? Like if we bond that project, we have the savings to then pay for the out years. It's, it's a strategy for figuring it out. If we don't wanna get into it, I, 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 we don't need to.
It's the only way to balance the plan.
Yes.
I think all of the school projects after the. After the, uh, you know, the roof and the solar and the ventilation should all be bonded.
Yeah, and then, you know, then it becomes a board of finance game. Is that how they. Move money around or how we get interest, but I, you know, it would be nice if we could figure it out. Maybe not tonight, maybe not in this budget season, if we could figure out how more accurate we got for all of that. Um, so that we can plan for it because we should be doing that as this could be.
Yeah, so that was one change I'd recommend that we can't, you know, jump from. Rough spending two and a half million dollars per year on the schools for CIP projects to five million. You you can't do that in one year.
No.
You're not gonna get another two and a half million out of the taxpayer.
Agreed.
For that. So I think that's it. The minimum what a bond needs to kick in and also depending on your building study and. More realistic or recent costs is what I should say.
Agreed.
Um, and it also doesn't, you know, deplete the general fund. It's shown on the fund spreadsheet um.
Well, we're still in the hole, I think, but not by nearly as much.
Yeah, so.
So, but what it does do is it, if you're bonding all of the school projects in year two, what that's gonna do is drive this number up to like. You know, I I I'm guessing, but it's gonna be pretty drastic.
But the the money set aside in year one for the roof project is enough to get you going, is that correct?
Yep, at one point.
Good.
So all the stuff that's in year two that's big amounts, like the Lisker Road. Um, the fire station. Did I say year one?
No, you said year two, sorry.
Um. And then in year three, the school projects, that's like twenty. Twenty million.
Your, your two is, your two is like a fourteen million dollar bond, year three is like a twenty million dollar bond.
Right. So if we have the discussion. Then later about bonding, we have an opportunity to kind of kill two birds with one's tail. We have the opportunity to. Take a look at the project sooner than later, not this year, but maybe next year. Um, and have the opportunity to give taxpayers a more realistic picture, give. The board of selectmen and understanding, I think, priming the pump, having them understand the work that we're doing and trying to figure this out and. Having them know what's coming um and having them be able to um respond to that is important.
There's pros and cons to bundling bonds together or the function of the bonds. You could take. A school bond and the Lisker Road Bridge bond, the Stokfield Road, two point two million, which is supposedly gonna be. Some sort of bond, the firehouse bond, um, and lump them all together and. Two things can happen. One is you can get enough supporters from each one of those projects so that the. Uh, board event supporters will vote yes for the whole bond because that's what they want and the fire department people will vote yes. Uh, for that sort of thing.
Congress.
Or it is too big and people choke on the price, say no. And, and that's happened in Stafford a few years ago where they lumped multiple. Bonds to expenses together into one bond and failed totally and they haven't done any of the projects they wanted to do to that bond. You have the opportunity to, the school bond is separate, yes or no, bonding cost of presenting that. Package on its own merits and let people vote of, do I support the school or not? Or, um, would the school rather be lumped in with the firehouse and the roads and take a shot for one big one? Um, and.
A million dollar bond.
I would love to have a conversation about that, not just in isolation. I feel like that would be an excellent conversation to have with board of finance, with board of selectmen. And to hear people's feedback, because I feel like we're just beating a drum here. Which doesn't make any difference because there's other people that are the, the decision makers. If we can sit down with the board of selectmen and say, this is what we think, this is what we see, like, that makes more sense to me.
That, that's the purpose of this plan now. It's the only thing I'm trying to get at. Like that's our job is to. Where their, the board of selectmen's, we're the committee of the board of selectmen. They're relying on us to do the legwork to validate this project and come up, to validate this project and come up with a plan. It is our job to present a plan to them. Even if it's bad, but that they have confidence in. That these are the projects that need to be funded over a five-year period. And then this is the best, we present our best foot forward to have a, have a bunch of the balances in the end. And then they come back to us and say, hey, it's, we can't do this. They can tell us which projects they wanna cut at that point, because we validate, we feel that all of these, that's why I say I keep going back to the argument, we gotta figure out which of these projects. If we don't feel like we can raise taxes anywhere, which of these projects you wanna get rid of, Stu?
So let's start with some simple ones. I'm not gonna get rid of any, but do we have a consensus to leave them in or take them out? And we'll try to do the easy ones first and some of these are committed, so the, uh. The Wellington Hill First Response Vehicle, they took delivery of it and we're on the hook. Uh, for twelve thousand and so dollars per year, uh, coming from Fund Seventeen, so coming from the ambulance billing.
Sorry, what line I did that?
Uh, that was line twenty-eight.
Yeah, these, these are all committed. We can't touch anything previously committed, so it's only the new item.
And the, the ambulance, uh, expense, you're gonna have an ambulance expense probably forever unless some, when all money comes in.
Let me ask, can I ask this question aside, brother? Is ten thousand dollars coming out of Fund Seventeen for ambulance payroll? Is that obligated? How is that obligated?
It's not obligated, it is past practice. For the, for the last, oh, ten, fifteen years, Donna, make, correct if I'm wrong, that they've taken some money out of. Fund Seventeen to fill a payroll. That's a board of finance decision.
I, I, I agree, I, but to the, that's another. Now, that's another fund that ties into this as well.
Yes.
That's meant to be a vehicle operator.
They used it to soften the blow years ago for payroll and, uh.
So.
It's kind of been in there some years. It's a lot more than that, um.
The recommendation, we pull that out quite frankly, you know, it's a budgetary discussion, because Fund Seventeen has this committee. Needs, we have, uh, an eight point five million dollar or eight and a half, or eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar fire truck in year three. Four, three, in year three. That's replacement, right? It's quite, yeah, I agree. Uh, replace year four, I'm sorry, it's year four, line thirty-seven. We have a fund balance in Fund Seventeen. If you don't touch it, you know, maybe year five, we can almost get there without financing the thing, which is, which is kind of a goal. That's not the. We can't keep touching it for things like parking lot replacement. That's a capital outlay. Would be my argument. So, uh, for example, sorry, I, we need to talk line items and I'm drifting through this because I stared at it too long now. Parking lot replacement, line thirty-three is coming from Fund Seventeen. That should not be a Fund Seventeen item. That should be a capital outlay.
Donna, can you speak to that? As far as like the.
Within the rules of what was established for Fund Seventeen. It doesn't have to be vehicles or equipment only, does it? Or stations?
No, doesn't have.
I think, I think it falls under just the generic category of emergency.
And, and that may be the case. I'm just recommending that that's another one of those things where you shortchange yourselves and then. We wind up not having our money to, in the fund, because.
I think the, the proposed expenses. Well, for year one, for coming from Fund Seventeen are significantly less than the. Moderately less than what the income is. Um, so the fund would still increase, not as much as perhaps we'd like it to, but Fund Seventeen can pay for that without going back to the taxpayer on. Uh, from their tax bill to pay for the projects.
And they're just gonna pay for the fire truck later.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Although, although, I think every fire truck in the last twenty years has been, uh, a lease. And Fund Seventeen paid for them, even though out in year fours is, uh, you know, actually, uh, Fund Four for General Reserve. And that cost you makes split the difference in terms of what can Fund Seventeen continue to, uh, pay, but, uh, every truck since. Two thousand and three, I think, has been paid for from Fund Seventeen.
As leases.
As leases.
And if we didn't have the leases, we took more money to pay for more equipment and let the cost of it down. And, and again, that's why I say when you, when we start to shortchange these funds, because.
Put it through the funding source of Fund Seventeen and took that out of the local funds.
Say that again.
So they, so the leases for the ambulances and the fire trucks that were ongoing or even in the past were paid for ambulance billing revenue. The tech, in, in theory, when we look at, is the taxpayer didn't pay for any of that stuff. The ambulance billing revenue paid for all the fire trucks. And, uh, and some equipment, the ten grand that they used to take for payroll and stuff like that. Fund Seventeen's income paid for all that, so the nine fifty for year, uh, four for the fire truck. Foot, we have to look at Fund Seventeen at that point, at, at that cost, because it's almost double the last fire truck. Of similar type, uh, I think it was four seventy-fives. So, but in, in terms of the, you know, the parking lot replacement, um.
I mean, to that end, if we're gonna play that game, why not make the two hundred thousand that we're paying the fund for the fire station?
You don't have the income to do that.
Yeah, you do. We have a fund balance according to this of three hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars.
It, with lease payments to come as well, the, the new ambulance coming out.
Year one, we have four hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars. For Donna's spreadsheet. The money's in there. If we're gonna go that game, let's, let's completely deplete the account and take the two hundred thousand dollars.
I'm not proposing depleting the account. I would say the two hundred thousand, leave it where it is. And the other items that are in Fund Seventeen, Fund Seventeen can support those and, uh.
I, 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 I think we're gonna play this, we either, we have Fund Seventeen to do what it's intended to do, which is largely to replace equipment. Or. We just say it's, it's a way to. Fund any of these things we don't want to pay for, we don't want to put in front of the taxpayers a tax thing, and then we wind up hitting later, because we don't have the funds to pay for it.
Well, you just said that, so now they all have heard that statement. So I'm not sure that we have to say it. Um.
No, but I.
I was trying to get clarification from Donna about what Fund Seventeen is, because I heard you say a few times that it was just for equipment and that, that's not what necessarily Fund Seventeen is for.
It can be used for other things, but it is intended to replace equipment.
The first priority is apparatus, the first priority is to replace the ambulance every seven years.
That's what it's there for.
So.
We keep stealing.
But, well. I, I hear that, um, Wellington won't talk about it as well, that, but this, some of the funds from Fund Seventeen go to do other stuff too. It's not just the equipment. So.
It can, I just argue it shouldn't, because we're shortchanging ourselves.
I don't know what to say to that. I mean, I'm, I'm not on board finance for a reason, like there's no, I have no. Ability to kind of navigate these things. I, I'm thinking about, um. These, moving these things around as like that's Donna's stuff and that's the board of finances stuff.
It's not, that's our job.
So.
Every time we move something, that's because that's what we're, that's what we're here. That's what we were brought together to do, was to figure out where these things slide in the time, in the, in the table.
So your, your interpretation of our job is to figure out that ten thousand dollars for ambulance payroll shouldn't be. Out of Fund Seventeen, it should be out of.
It showed up on the spreadsheet, yes. It's our job to determine. And recommend to the board of finance that this is the plan as we see it. If you disagree, okay, let's have that conversation. Put it back in, but. The balance Fund Seventeen, the balance this thing, we, it, it is our job, Jen. I don't, you know, no matter how many times you, you say you feel otherwise, that is literally our job.
So I. I don't know what to say, Jim, because this is just gonna keep the back and forth thing and it doesn't make any difference. No one's going anywhere. It's not getting us anywhere. So I, and, and I'm not necessarily stupid, so I understand, like, our role is, is. Fiscal in nature, but it's not the minutia fiscal in nature. It's the hearing the people coming and talking about their projects and helping. Us to understand where it fits into the picture now versus year five. And I agree with you. That we need to be more mindful about the years two through five. I don't agree with you that we have to do it tonight, or that we can't even do it tonight.
I agree, we're in a rough spot because all of this happened too late in the game.
So.
And, but we still need to present a plan that balances, like, even if it's a crappy one. The board of finance would say, that's why we review it with the board of finance.
Year one and then bond. Then in your mind, it's all done, right?
No.
Because that's what's gonna happen. That's how it works. I mean, that's, I don't know if that's how it works. That came out wrong. That, that caught it.
So let's, let's jump back and try to clear some of these off the board. The, uh, emergency services, the forty-one thousand for the turnout here. I would propose leaving it there. The expenses as proposed towards Fund Seventeen.
Talk about it one at a time. It's a board of finance, before the board of finances is an annual budgetary item. It shouldn't be here.
The, uh, the expenses as presented here for Fund Seventeen. Generally meet or slightly under the income for Fund Seventeen. So what I'm saying is Fund Seventeen can afford the forty-one thousand for this year. Um, with the understanding that, you know, the selectmen are trying to keep the overall budget increase as low as possible.
May I ask a question? Um, Donna, who decides where the money comes from?
It is the job of the C I P committee to.
I am, Jen, because I'm tired of it.
Pay for the projects in the plan.
Yep, it's our job.
Donna. It's our job to decide that Fund Seventeen is not an appropriate use of funds for this particular project?
Or if it is appropriate for this project.
I'd recommend what's appropriate.
Donna, yes. Okay, thank you.
Our job to recommend what's appropriate.
And based on the, the question I asked you, it's, it's for equipment. But it's also used for other stuff.
Correct.
So did the, did the people that submitted the project, I'm sorry, I should know the answer to this question, um. Suggest where the funds would come from?
No, they have, they just put their project forth as a need and it's up to this committee to figure out. Um, how to pay for it.
But it was pre-populated in here before we saw it. So now we're discussing.
To start the conversation, it was, all of the projects were loaded in, like the five million for the school project in year three. Was loaded in, so talk about it. How can we pay for it?
And there is a precedent going back quite a few years ago that the C I P did buy turnout gear for the departments. It's like, this is a new concept.
I, I'm not saying, you're gonna get turned out here, Stu. I'm not arguing, just saying the board of finance is clearly represented. It's probably a budgetary item. It should show up in, it's, it's involved budgets currently. I don't believe it's here. Christina and Steph said, when we talked about it, don't believe it should be in here. I think it should pull up from this plan. The board of finance is gonna capture it.
I think it is here in Fund Seventeen to take some of the stress off of the selectmen's budget. Otherwise, if it would get pushed off to the selectmen budget.
And people.
And what?
And Pete's budget looks bad. Which is the reality of the situation, guys.
Stuart, can I speak for Wellington Hill on a couple of these items?
Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. Um, the, um. The debate about if these items should be coming out of the capital plan or not, I think bring, Jim brings up a very good point. And unfortunately, the answer, as my. Literally decades of experience of presenting budgets to these boards and being on these boards would show is that the answer changes from time to time. There are some clear policies in town on how we do business. And there are some things that vary with the desires of the various boards and the turnover over, over the years. And we often have this conversation, is this really capital? Or is it an ongoing, or is it a wear and tear? Some towns have three different definitions, capital. And then, um, capital outlay and then, uh, regular operating budget. So there is unfortunately not a clear answer to Jim's question about how do we define if these, say, air packs are turnout here. Are a capital or not a capital? And that's unfortunate when you're at this moment trying to gut out the details. Um, a couple of things are clear, and that is items like. Should ten thousand dollars be coming out of Fund Seventeen, um, towards salary? Is absolutely not in the purview of this committee. It is a budgetary expense. It is not, it is not in the capital. It's not in a capital request unless someone changed how it's written. It's, you, go ahead, Jim.
Sorry, it, I'm just, well, that's why I asked Donna earlier, is it. Committed by some statute, because it's sitting in here saying committed just because you're twenty-four to twenty-eight. Ambulance payroll, ten thousand dollars, but there's nothing that I can tell that has that committed, other than the fact that we're just tracking it here.
Right, that's on the budget, that's on the budget balance pages, right? That's not as a C I P request, correct?
Correct.
It, it, it comes.
Right.
It comes backwards from the board of finance and we want.
Right. But it doesn't actually come to capital, because Fund Seventeen doesn't belong to C I P. Right? The, it's Fund Seventeen itself is not in the purview of C I P. C I P suggests things should be taken out of it. But the fund itself is not in the purview of C I P.
It's not, but we, again, as we're doing here, we, we try to build a plan that allocates, that utilizes those lots.
I agree. And, and the way we solved this, if you look in the last couple of years with ARPA, this kind of thing came up. And one of the things that C I P did was, um, in talking with both fire departments about what things were. Uh, priorities and what things from the fire departments were possibly ARPA eligible. C I P wrote a letter to the board of finance and to the ARPA commission and said, we would like you to consider. Knowing we had no power to actually command it or decide it, we would like you to consider taking these up. And so, for example, ARPA, ARPA took up the second ambulance purchase. Um, and things like that. So, so C I P can certainly send a letter to, you know, vote to send a letter. Um, from the chair or whatever to these other committees to ask them to consider funding it. Um, and that is a good, probably a good planning tool. Um, but. You know, at, at a time, when you're in a time crunch, at some point you gotta say, well, this is the stuff that we're empowered to do. You know, we'll have to work on this and send a letter above the rest.
You, you know, in terms of jet, definition of capital expenditures, turnout gear, you're right, is not it. And this is only a one-year fix. That, you know, that similar expenditure could probably, uh, depend on the number of members joining, when gear expires or becomes.
Talking about, they talked about this being a, a recurring forty thousand dollar request.
Now, going back many years, it might even be before Bill's time, the carpet replacement or the paint and carpet.
Computers too.
Every, every year, every year they put in for doing, I think, two classrooms, uh, twenty thousand dollars or whatever it was. Some people like that because they knew that money was designated for that project only and it was gonna get done. As opposed to lumping twenty thousand extra dollars into the board of events budget and then losing track of it and creates a bad year, we're not gonna do. Uh, the carpet and paint day here. Um, and that went back and forth, I think, several times. Oh, 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 I think now you've got those absorbed into your maintenance budget. Is that correct?
Free me and now the request is back. Pre dates me for sure.
Yeah, uh.
So, uh, but, I, I'm fine, we can leave it in, but it's. If then, so if we leave it in, does the board of finance and say, oh, well, C I P has it, so we're not, we're gonna pull out of that budget and then we're gonna.
They, they simply modify the plan, so they can either throw it back into C I P on their own. It doesn't need our permission to that plan, because they're only, you know, a suggesting body, so to speak.
Yeah.
Um, and so they can throw it right back into C I P if that's where they wanted to come from, or they could move it to the operational side. And take it out of state. Um, so in an effort to throw it in, I'll change tax a little bit, in an effort to throw it into the board of finances lab. I would, uh, zero out the turnout gear. And it's already in the budget request for, on the operational side of both fire departments to do that, and if board of finance wants to kick it back. That's their purview to do so.
Yeah, and that's a discussion they need to have.
For sure, and the ten thousand dollars for the ambulance payroll, I would do a similar thing, let's take that out. And again, if they want, uh, refund seventeen for whatever they feel is an appropriate dollar amount, um. That, uh, they can do that. So that way, C I P is kinda recommending it's not best practice to pay for ongoing costs for either payroll or budget either.
So next, next line down, along with Sam Lance, parking lot replacement, thirty five thousand dollars, does this go here?
I would, yes, yeah, I consider that a capital expense if they paid the parking lot, if they're, it's good for, you know, ten, twenty years, um.
Nine thirty, right, nine ten, nine ten, capital spend, nine ten, nine thirty, right?
Nine thirty, nine thirty, okay, let's put it over to nine thirty.
Well, I, I, he didn't, he didn't show up, he can come back and.
Okay.
And say, you know, no, this is the case, and it can go, but we have opportunity for two more meetings. Um. But that's not gonna show up down here yet. Because it doesn't naturally tell you.
True, correct.
Uh, but we can, it's not the end of the world, where am I? There I am. Okay, that's one twenty nine.
So, uh, let's jump down to public works, the first five items, I believe, are committed for lease payments already. Um, the. Uh, Village Hill Road drainage, the trip grant, I think it's a new one that it's going after.
Yeah, so is that, are we saying that is fully, we're saying that's fully grant funded, I'm sorry, I don't know about the trip grant and whether or not.
It, it's a fairly new grant, but it's only been out a couple of years, but that's about all I know about it, um, and it is, uh. Separated from the steep grants, um.
So, can I, hey, I, I, I think Village Hill. Travelly needs to get done, so I, if it's grant funded, then it has no impact to our budget here, if it doesn't get grant funded, it gets pushed out and we deal with it at a later day. Hopefully through grant funding, um, what I'd argue is, we know we don't have a million dollar for a grant here for the salt shed. We have, we think this is being paid by a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar holdover from five years ago.
Steep grant.
Correct, but only a three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is there any reason to keep this, I, what I heard last meeting is that. We have no intention of spending a million dollars on a salt shed, meaning if this grant is only covering three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They're gonna figure out a way to do a salt shift for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right? Is there any reason to carry that request at a million dollars even though we submit it that way, if we realize we're never gonna fund it that way? Because I don't want this grant to go away and then say, oh, we have a million dollar salt shed.
I would agree to move that to three fifty, um, the plans there are old enough. And they've already done, uh, like one of the changes, they had to put fuel tanks in, the old ones were expiring, they had to do that project. So they did that three or four years ago, and the fuel tanks went. Were on a location that probably made sense to everybody at the least amount of cost, but took it out of the. Master plan, which was moving the fuel tanks to somewhere else, now they are above ground and could move them, but it'd be very expensive to. Uh, to do that, I think you're right, it's a more realistic. Uh, thing to cut that to the estimated three fifty on the steep grant, if we can still get it, um. And let them go back to the drawing board.
That's, that's my concern, right, I don't wanna show a million dollar project when we don't have the budget in this here to spend a million dollars on a salt shed. We have way greater part, we may be forced to do something.
Well, I, I think unless that grant was approved already. And we could put it solidly in year one, I agree, I think that, my understanding, if things are in year one, we absolutely have a way to fund it.
So this is the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar holdover that we.
Well, the one, where was the three hundred and fifty from, this year?
A steep grant from probably four or five years ago.
So what was the steep grant spent on last year?
It wasn't.
You don't necessarily get a steep grant every year, some years.
It was in the budget, though, it's this five hundred thousand dollar steep grant.
Cor- correct, but we didn't.
That, that was pending, trying to get that, the state to release the funding. That apparently they have a letter saying, from the state, yes, you can use the money for your public works project. But the right person has not appeared yet at the state level to actually say, the funding's all set, here you go.
So what it technically looks like is that we would have, if we got, we would have one point five million dollars.
Yeah.
No, the.
Because the project is there.
It's, it's a same chunk of money, uh, slightly reduced from the five hundred, so, uh, there is no five hundred thousand dollar steep grant coming in this current year.
Yeah, that five hundred thousand dollars is the hypothetical.
That was the wishful thinking.
As it is this year.
Um.
So, Donna, what is, how does that happen, the, if a, if a, a project is put in here. And maybe you guys have the answers, I just wanted to check, like, the steep grant, have we applied for it, like, is it?
No, the, the board of selectmen is gonna apply for it when it's open.
And we assume we're gonna get it, which is why it's in the budget?
It's possible, it's possible.
Regards to the salt shed, that was old money that was not spent.
Yeah, he's not applying for his grant.
Onto it, have told us they would be willing, willing to release it, but have not released it yet back to us for the purposes of the salt shed.
Right, so why did it end up being a million ever? I don't.
That's, the, the master plan from many years ago was a million dollar salt in.
Okay, so.
Which it included a hundred thousand dollars of dirt moving, doing the fuel tanks, um, relocating kind of everything.
So I agree, I agree with Jim that it should be knocked down to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars if that's the amount that we have. More available to us than not.
Yeah, and the catch is it has to be in this year one, because we have to look like we're, we have to, well, we are trying to, he's gonna follow up on this, but. It has to be in year one to let. Uh, the state basically show that they're doing something to, uh, try and.
And it kind of throws it back on them, says, we wanna do something, your other department is holding onto the money, could you please get it to us so we can do it?
It, it's a weird one, I just, I don't wanna commit us to a million dollars.
Yeah, no, I think three fifty is inappropriate.
Is it the same thing with the trip grant, like, what, how, if we don't have that in hand, what happens to that project, it gets moved?
It doesn't happen this year and we try again another year or find a different funding source. Or, or the board of finances, okay, we're not getting a trip grant for this. We have to pay for it out of pocket, or it goes back a year and we're ready to get a grant another way.
What was proposed a couple of years ago, uh, and I'm sure Mike will remember this conversation, is the, uh, public works bought an excavator. To be able to dig drainage type, uh, projects, which they have been doing around town, but near as I know, they have not started anything on Village Hill. And the idea is that you start at the bottom and climb your way up, and if you have a, a day or a week or a month that you can. Set your local resources out there, the cost obviously would be much less than hiring a contractor from scratch to come out and do it. Um, and I'm hoping their use of their excavator may come to fruition on that.
I do remember that, yes.
Yeah, am I accurate in my, uh, description of that?
Yes, that is correct, and, and I think the, the lead up to that conversation is that, uh. We have always been of the understanding that these projects don't move forward if the grant they're predicated on doesn't come through. Unless, as Jim said, we find another alternative funding source because it's felt it's a priority. Which is why the salt hasn't happened for years.
Board of finance.
Who decides that?
Those, those become, well, they can be advisory decisions on this board and sent forward if it's during the time that this board is meeting, but these things sometimes occur mid-year. And in the end, if you're gonna fund it another way, it's gotta go through board of finance and the taxpayers anyway.
The, the example being the septic system at the Old Town Hall was submitted as a steep grant, it was approved. I think they're still waiting for the money to come in, or is that a reimbursement that grant?
Reimbursement.
Yeah, so it, um, so they've done the engineering, I'm expecting the construction will happen this spring, and then they'll get the money back on. Uh, the steep grant for doing that, um, but the timing is off on somebody, some year, there was a year or two, they didn't have a steep program. There are some years that you apply and you don't get it, uh, because it is a competitive, uh, grant with other small towns. And many years we do get it, it, it's been certainly helpful to us over the years, because we've got two years of term bike road done, uh, through that.
Um, so just to jump in.
Could you guys let Chief Moore in, he's in the waiting room?
Yeah, sorry, I was actually, I can't see the waiting room while I'm sharing screen, unfortunately. Uh.
He just texted me, asked to, ask, let him in, let him in, I mean. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, and I was actually raising my hand to say, Melissa and Karen Anne. Uh, if you have anything to say, please just speak up, don't raise hand, because sometimes when the shares, I can't tell you're trying to get in.
Um, line fifty six, the stormwater treatment, uh. Things are taking some of the drainage from the transfer station in public works and. Uh, trying to treat that a little more appropriately before it goes downstream, this has been on the list, I'm thinking fifteen years. It's not a big amount of money, uh, there, there was a letter from the G P P saying you should do this, uh, I'd love to get it off. At least say we got something done.
The thirty five.
The thirty five thousand for the stormwater treatment chambers.
I agree.
Okay. Um.
Before we go off, public works, can we, and it's a year two thing, are we? So here's the discussion, is the, um, the bond, the Schofield and Lisker roads, we're showing as a year two bond item? Uh, the only discussion I basically wanna have here is there any, does anybody have any feeling that one project to the others or both? Is something that should be considered prioritized enough to move up to a year, I personally think the Schofield and Lisker Road have different priority sets. The Schofield is a big dollar amount for, what really amounts to drainage for seven properties in town, um. And I'm sure those residents feel differently and I don't hate me, um, if we're gonna do it. I, you know, push it out, uh, if it's a year two, it's, it can be a discussion for a future.
Yeah, I believe that, my feeling is the priority of these two projects are significantly different, um. Lisker Road is a bridge, and if it falls down, it's a long time to.
I agree, which is.
Get, get something back in place, uh, and the two point two million for Schofield, well, it's a. Not a great road in the winter when, you know, some of the water sheeded across the road and ice, it's generally been treated well with sand and salt or whatever they put down these days. And it has washed out twice in, uh, one of those, uh, irregular rainstorms we had, uh, twice in one year, no less. Where there was a chunk of the dirt at the bottom of the hill, uh, but it's not a frequent occurrence. Uh, so those might need to be, even though the funding source could be the same in terms of if you're doing some sort of bond, uh. They may, they may need to be judged on their own merits and decide which ones are more important.
And that's why I asked the question, if anybody has the appetite for considering Lisker in year one, I. I, I think we're gonna be doing it in, within the first five years at some point. It's a bond, would we bond nine hundred thousand dollars for year one to do Lisker?
I mean, this is probably no shock to anybody, I'm not, um, I, I'm not. Super willing to make that decision without Troy being here, I feel like. The conversation needs to happen with the person who's representing that department, maybe he's not even ready to do it, like that, I don't wanna make that decision.
Uh, what if he said that as, was that a year?
In the, if the steep program is still going on, that's what kind of we need to hear from the first selectmen, the, uh. We did get previous funding for the Paulston Road Bridge upgrades, it was, uh. Did some scouring underneath the foundation, as well as the Daleville School Road Bridge came from Stephen, um.
Can check, I'm sharing screen, I don't wanna do that.
So the, you know, the funding opportunity for at least a chunk of that may come up for Lisker Road. Through some other, uh, funding sources, maybe, maybe, that would cut that local cost from. You know, was it nine hundred thousand or something like that to, uh, you know, if you, if we got the maximum, like five hundred local cost to go down to four hundred thousand.
Looking for this.
Just isn't the right description for.
He has, he has Lisker as a year one. And he has. Or am I looking at all? Hold on.
Can I cut in for a second and ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, Schofield Road has been pushed back a number of years, I know that, um. Has it been getting worse over those course of those years, and if it has, how much worse has it been getting?
I can only voice my experience with driving up and down the road, I wouldn't say the road surface is any worse. Uh, it's not like the road is breaking up or anything like that, uh, so we did have those two storms, uh, three years ago, I think, that. You know, the town had to spend, you know, upwards of probably, you know, three, four, five days and some expense, they had to buy a lot of stone product to put in. And then four weeks later, it all washed out again, and they just scoop it all up and, you know, put it back in the gutters and, uh. Uh, to do that, but I think for, uh, day-to-day experience of going up that road and problems during icing. My opinion has been minimal, um. And they certainly go fast enough on that road already, um, so, you know, it's not, it's like other places in town, it's not an ideal situation for drainage. Uh, could it be improved upon yet, but it's very expensive for. What little impact you're gonna get, um, you know, if the road was in danger of collapsing and washing down the hill completely, it'd be a different starting, um.
So Troy did submit Lisker as year one, and Schofield is year two, that being said, every project he submits will be year one or year two. So he's saying everything is a priority.
Yeah.
Um. For what that informs this discussion, um. I, I could see it happening, that, but if we stick, uh, around paying nine hundred, or no, it's actually. One point one, right, or one oh six, like one million.
On this spreadsheet, it says Lisker nine hundred thousand.
He's, oh shoot, zero. He submitted it as a million.
How do I see, um.
Line fifty four.
Oh, nine hundred K, so what is the Lisker Road Bridge, oh, that's the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
It was combined as a bond in the spreadsheet, because that's how it was positive, we approach it. Uh, Schofield, he submitted as two point two, Lisker has one million plus six thousand for planning engineering and construction. Camp a call, that conversation, but I don't understand this. How that went to nine hundred thousand.
And I don't know how far they've gotten into the engineering on that, I think they had somebody doing a, a preliminary, preliminary engineering for Schofield.
Yeah, he submitted six thousand, or six thousand in here for planning, planning, engineering inspections on that. So, I, I mean. This is, uh, another one of those things that looks bad in year one, what will we push out? Um, nine, realistically, if it's nine hundred thousand dollars, or if it was twelve million, because I, that's how it was submitted. We're not funding that out of capital fund, we don't have it, so it's a bond. So it's, uh, I don't know, it's a hundred and some odd thousand dollars that is taxation to deal with Lisker Road. Or. We say, I, I mean. That's, that's the thing, is, these need to get done. Over the next couple of years, so it's, when do we wanna feel the hurt?
So I think that. I don't. I don't wanna do this in a, um. Like, haphazard's the wrong word, I, because it's probably the opposite of that, it's like an incredibly well thought out, but it has to be incredibly well thought out, like. As far as, as far as these kinds of situations go, I envision. Users, whatever bodies, sitting down with D P W and talking about what these actually look like. Dollars and cents, this is gonna start in this year, and this is what's gonna happen every subsequent year, like, that's to me what needs to happen, and I'm not comfortable. Uh, uh, having a conversation tonight about it, like, to put it in year one, but certainly in a subsequent conversation about years two. Having a conversation tonight about it, like to put it in year one, but certainly in a subsequent conversation about years two through five. Let's talk about it. Let's talk to Troy about bonding or whatever the conversation is. Um, I don't want to just put things in your world because we. Think well informed, think it's a priority.
I, I, I only raised the conversation because he put it in year one. Uh, we moved it. Before we saw this. I, I agree with your frame of thinking. I don't think we have the, the mindset to. Kind of, the understanding of what this project entails to say, yes, this is a year one bond we gotta put on the taxpayer. I think we do need to do a much better job moving forward from here. So we're not necessarily the next year. Of getting information early and when. The department submit these requests, they submit them with the backup. That's needed and we allow our sides time to have that discussion well in advance of needing to make a budgetary decision.
I agree with him. I.
That's where we're gonna get. So I, I mean, I'm leaning towards unless anybody in the room. Um, or. I apologize, Melissa and Karen. I can't, I can't see you. Oh, I see Ralph's hand. Sorry. Oh, Ralph. Are we? Ralph, you had a comment?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, Schofield Road. Well, let's. Look at uh, how that's evolved over the years. Um, there is a. Obvious watershed issue with stormwater on that road. Uh, Stu talked about some of the repairs we had to do at the lower end. Uh, with the changes in storm patterns. It's certainly not going to improve. As far as the intensity of the storms we get. But one thing you all have to keep in mind here, this is a densely developed road. And you have to shed that water off somewhere. The money, I think, that Troy was looking for was to get into a feasibility plan. As to how we can acquire rights to drain. As we divert stormwater off to the side coming down that hill. Which is going to impact a lot of property owners. If we don't have a comprehensive plan, this project will languish. Until the storm does come that undercuts the edge of the pavement even more than it has been over the years. So to not fund something to get planning. And, and feasibility underway with respect to right of way and drainage easements. Uh. We're, we're, we're gonna get hit with a monster bill when the road finally does deteriorate to the point that we have no choice but to do it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. But I, I mean, that goes to, well, that's, that's a discussion for us because he didn't submit that. He submitted a two point two million dollar project for Schofield Road.
And he also submitted it in year two, correct?
He did, correct. So while I don't know, he didn't specify that he needed separate funding to do the engineering and that needed to be a broken hat request. Or whether or not that engineering is part of a bonded project and is ripped into the bond with the actual construction. I don't, we don't have the clarity on that. These are the things moving forward that. If we're gonna approve something like that, we need to get that information. There's a need there. I get that. Think we're gonna have to tackle it, so.
I mean, historically, we've gone to, for any of these major projects, gotten some degree of engineering work done ahead of time. So we have at least a rough idea. Is it a one million dollar project, a two million dollar project and anywhere in between? You have to do some engineering and not just, let's take one big lump of money, that really a wild guess. And then the actual project may come in way over budget or way under. Let's at least try to have an educated guess. Of having the engineers go, okay, we, you know, what are our opportunities to push water down the hill somewhere uh, or divert it?
So I, I think we did that through a bit engineering kind of study.
I think it's ongoing. Um. I'm not, I'm not sure the, like, the results have come in yet.
My, my, I suspect Troy's not gonna go out on a limb and just pull two point two million dollars, say, without having something saying this is what we.
And six thousand doesn't buy you much engineering either.
Well, that was for the other project. And I think that was town engineering and testing, if I remember correctly. Um, not a study, but I think the reality is like they have that information. And this is really the design and construction of it is probably ripped into that, that number. But again, this is, this is the appetite conversation. Do we have an appetite to bond three point one million dollar, three point two million dollars in year one?
No.
I, you know, that's.
It, the, you know, three potential bond issues coming out, be it the, the school, uh, maintenance upgrades. The fire departments and the roads. There, you know, obviously three distinct projects. Um. And. Can you sell them all together? Probably, you know, probably not based on. You know, the potential payment they have for the new school, everybody voting, or majority voting, no. Uh. And then out of those three, you know, the school, the fire departments and the roads. If you had to pick. One. You know. Back to the other two, obviously. You'd like to approve all three. Um. But you gotta get it. Passed with taxpayers.
Yeah, I, I mean, the bill is unfortunately gonna come due eventually if we're being honest about it, you know, and, and not. Again, that's a four-word gem. I didn't mean to say, uh, I'm not saying we're lying, but like there's a. We're saying we believe these are needs. There's gotta be a way to fund them somehow. And the reality is that's a tax increase and it's either gonna happen in year one. Or it's gonna happen in year two, or it's gonna happen in year three. And whether we bundle it or not, it's gonna be the same increase as the taxpayer. I don't know whether, uh, you know, cumulative tax increase is the taxpayer, right? Because it's, it's. It may cost more if we delay a little bit, but we're not gonna get into that.
And Schofield and Villa Chil, they could push out, I think, at least fifteen years.
And, um, so. And are they gonna be pushed out by more? I can't do that in this budget. I, I. I.
And I said, this is, you know, the overall bonding scheme is a bigger. Conversation have probably with the board of finance.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely need to workshop this with all of them.
And, uh. You know, see, you know, ultimately, not only does it need their approval, but you know, can we come to some overall. Grand consensus and when you have million dollar projects and. You know, can we do them at all and how can we do them? And when do we start paying for and doing them?
But I, what I will say is to that end, I mean, I know Christina's been asking. The board of finance members and the board of selectmen to pay attention and come to these meetings, given this severity of this, and we haven't gotten anybody attending. So like they can't, if they're not here, they can't engage in conversation while we're having it. I hope we can engage in a conversation afterwards, but I mean, Bruce, to his credit, Bruce did show up with a couple of the earlier meetings, both presentations are being made. Um, and Christina and Peter and. Um, I mean, our board obviously announced that, so.
So I assume that there's no. Well, I guess I shouldn't assume. I, I would imagine there's nothing wrong with inviting them specifically to a meeting. And just.
Yeah.
Asking for their participation. But then I don't know if that's a joint, I'm assuming that will be a joint meeting and then they would have to post it.
Which is, I will, can't spread. So, and maybe, maybe that's a strategy.
And. You know, and while there's never a big time to add more meetings, uh, this time of year is the toughest time because. They have all the budget, we have that. So I, I think. Uh, concurrence I kind of hear is the Liska Road, the Schofield Road, we're not gonna do anything in year one with it. Um. We need to have that big conversation of coming up with three million dollars. For just those two projects, someone, while you're at it, you had Villa Chil and. Be done with it and. Um.
Yes, two twenty-five.
Yes, like a two hundred and five, I said, it's two hundred and twenty hours right there. It's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. You know, that's a half a thou, a little less than half a thou.
And then it said, you know, if you looked at it on its own and the other big projects weren't pending. You tell, yeah, we could probably do that. Um.
Those are your two, no change. Uh.
Um. The, jumping down to the library, um. Other than the bond payment, uh, they have the eighty thousand for the outside of the building, trying to get that buttoned up and maintained. Um, and while it took them a while to come to the table, I want to thank them for identifying the projects and spreading them out. Kind of year by year, this offers the well for us, um, to be able to do that. And I think. We've shown a commitment and hope the board of finance will as well to continue that trend. Uh, we certainly, on the newer town buildings, the newest. And, uh. Look to maintain their buildings so we don't get behind like we have some or most of the other town buildings. Any discussion of library building involved?
No, I mean, I, uh, so the only discussion I have on the library is that they are getting to an age where. We are gonna need to start planning for. Uh, replacement costs for things like for bigger, bigger things there. There's not, you know, we're getting to an age of that building where this is where the. Having a reserve or, you know, strategy advanced or strategizing, building a, a little bit of a, a pool helps that. Because we need to start thinking about that over the next, like, there's a whole separate discussion we have about what happens in the years ten through twenty. And how do we plan for that to happen? Because this library is going to be there and they're gonna need help. And if we can't, that's part of the reason why it's not just library, all the buildings, those buildings included. Um, if we don't start getting ahead of the game here, we're gonna chronically get worse.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, one thing that's been pending is the roof. Uh, pushing twenty years, you know, they say shingles can last thirty, you know, if, if they put the right kind on there and it's. All went well, but that's obviously coming uh, at some point. And I don't know what a roof like that costs, but. Uh. It's bigger than my house, I'll put it that way, and I didn't want my guys, so.
Yeah.
It's a lot of money. So I think that, if we continue to follow the library and keep that place maintained. And do the best we can with that one. Um.
Yeah, Stuart, we have no idea what the roof would cost either. We actually put it way back in route. In year five, just to get some money to have it assessed. And find out what it might cost us.
That might have gotten.
Yep.
My computer is dead, so.
Because we know, we know we're getting up there in age, yes.
Yep, um. And so, uh, thank you for keeping an eye out for that building and, uh, hopefully we can see it will follow and maintain that. Anything else there?
No, um, you guys have all walked through. We've talked about the fact that. We'd like to keep up with it so that the building doesn't get worse. And so, um, we're working. Hopefully to get some of these things fixed to keep the library in good shape over the next five to ten years.
Very good. Thank you. Um, the revow is a. A mandated thing that we have to do by state statute, I believe. Um, so that is to put a little money aside each. Uh, year to the next revow, so we have some money to pay for it in tolls. Any questions on the revow? The open space fund, um. Uh, twenty-five thousand for year one and thirty thousand for the ongoing years. Uh, again, if you heard their presentation, there was the, said it's had some funding, so they would, uh, have some ready cash. To go with the opportunity presents to typically purchase some additional open space.
Can we know how much they have in there?
So they, we drop, we reduce this request too. This is thirty thousand originally.
Yes.
For the same reason, make the numbers.
Yes. Do we have then how much they have?
Yeah, about a few thousand, probably.
That could be.
I, I, I don't have it memorized either, but that's. I think that's what I thought.
I think they, they have enough money typically to get a valuation on some properties they would be looking at. Um. And other legal expenses and such, and then falling to present that to. The taxpayers and then if they have enough money in their fund as a whole to pay for it, that's great. Uh, they coupled in the past with some, uh. Other nonprofits that, uh. Disciplined and expensive state money available occasionally. Um, so the, yeah, costs you never quite know at this point. Because it could be a mixed care of local funds or saved up funds that's in their fund. Local funds that the townspeople would vote to say, let's take some money and throw it at this, and some other, uh, grant money to that. Um. That they can, uh, go after. And I think the few times that they did come to the town for money, um, it was always approved. Um, by the taxpayers to go ahead and do that.
So the only question on that one, I mean, I, I, I agree, I agree to fund it each year and plan, but, um. We wanna put backups there. It's the big question. Do we want to? I'm asking, I, um. We reduced it to make five thousand dollars, makes budget look a little better.
I would, I would take that because we put in thirty-five thousand to Peter's budget already. Um, may I ask a question about one of the funds? It says, open space from land use fees collected from development. Which, is that zero? What is that? Is it just as it says? People build stuff and they donate money to open space or something?
Yeah, I believe, let's pretend for a moment they were gonna build a little subdivision, ten houses on a dead end road or whatever. Uh, there's a, two things they can do, I hope I get this right. They can either donate a percentage of the land. As open space is part of that development. Um, or they, if there's a cash equivalent, that if, for some reason, the, either the town didn't want the land, that particular silver land. Or they wanted to use it and pay cash into the fund, so the town could purchase open space elsewhere. Um. Given the amount of development or general lack thereof, I suspect there's little penny money coming into that.
Well, it does say zero.
Yeah. But just if you think of the building projects around town, there's, you know, two or three houses going up and, uh. Not where there's subdivided land or anything like that. It's one of those things you, you know, don't cut your chickens before they hatch. We don't have any chickens. Anything else in year one? Not Mel? I, I, I'll just go back to it. Do we want to put more money into the capital reserve fund line three?
Yeah, I mean, the only other two, uh, uh, I've already summarized a hundred guide. I think we're shortchanging ourselves by shortchanging the cap reserve fund, but I, what I'm hearing is there's no appetite to. To. You know, try to. Start building ahead now, um, beyond. Jumping on the schools and I, I, I respect that. I, I disagree, but I have one voice here, so. I just want to make sure that I'm capturing these totals correctly because this is such a. So that.
You know, I'm not opposed to adding some money to that, that, uh, yes, we went from one point seven, seven, nine. Uh.
To one nine three eight.
To one nine. We still at nineteen oh three, three or did that change?
That changed. And increased by thirty-five thousand dollars.
Uh, are we done with that?
We're talking about the. The, um, spending, the local spending?
Yeah, it should be. I missed that. I should have already counted. It should be. Yeah, it shows a confused budget, so sure, it should be one nine.
I was gonna pull the members of the committee, do you want to put some money aside? In the, uh, capital reserve, which is basically, you know, that same expression, the shock absorber. Getting some money in there. Uh, so either something came up mid-year, you'd have some, which occasionally happens. Um. Or. Carry that over to next year. Um.
So.
To soften any blows that are coming for year two.
I personally would continue to argue that we maintain that effort in the absence of information of increasing that ten percent each year. And that should be five oh six, which is what it would have been. I also know I'm the minority voice in the room on that. And I know Christina, because she lowered it already on Pete, you know, in conversation with Pete. They reduced that to keep Pete, to keep Pete's budget low, so I know it's not gonna go anywhere.
Can I just ask you a question? You said in the absence of that information or some information, what are you talking about?
Um, we don't. We know we're really behind. The fund is deeply underwater. We don't know exactly how it's gonna shake out, but we know we're deeply in the hole.
We're deeply in the hole for years two through five.
Yeah.
Three through five, whatever.
Well, yes, three through five. But it's not just those projects, it's also getting ahead, which is the, what I think the bigger need is because if we continue to. Okay, we're just gonna get these. We have. We're gonna have a need beyond year five too, you know, and everything we do. If we don't plan accordingly for it, if we don't start trying to make inroads to get ahead rather than just playing catch up. It, you know, we're just gonna be in the same situation here every year.
Yeah, and I feel like I, I don't wanna throw the, I don't know if I like this analogy yet, throw the baby out with the bathwater, um. I, I don't think it's all or nothing, I think if we don't put. If we put the thirty-one thousand dollars in, I must have missed that meeting, I'm not sure how we came up with thirty-one thousand dollars.
It's decreased every time before we see this spreadsheet.
I, I feel like. In my opinion, this should stand for tonight. I know that's not popular opinion, but I think this should stand for tonight, and then. We have the discussion about going forward, what it's going to look like every year, and I know that we have commitments for ten percent. Um, input every year. But if, if the budget doesn't have support and or doesn't pass, we're right back to the drawing board. The school project is a, is a. Big hit this year, but it's a necessary hit, and. It would. Kind of makes sense to balance those two things out while considering putting more money in the bank next year. I don't know, that's just my opinion.
Melissa, Karen Anne, any comment on the, uh, putting money into the capital reserve?
I completely agree with what Jen just said. I assume it was Jen talking.
It wasn't me talking.
Yeah, I thought it sounded like you, um. I know that's going against what Jim's saying, but I, I happen to exactly agree with what Jen just said.
All right, Melissa?
I don't know, I'm kind of, um. Half and half, where I feel like we should put some more funds in, um. But I just don't know what the rest of the balance is gonna look like, um, if we add extra funds for year one.
Every, every dollar we add is a dollar that is gonna increase.
I mean, we know the town, we, we know our town's in trouble, we know that there's so many things that need to be updated. Constantly been pushed aside and not done, and because there's just no money and everybody voting against it. Um, so, I mean. I, you know, it's not like the money's gonna be going away, I think if we, we put it in, then it, it might help us in the long run.
And the information we don't have right now, and will not have tonight or even next week, is where is the rest of the budget's townwide going? That, you know, they obviously have pressures on them as well, and, um. Can and should they, and probably take precedent over us saving, saving money for. To fu- future projects or, you know, emergency reserve kind of thing, um. You know, where does that, you know, follow, like, you know, let's pretend for a moment we threw a hundred thousand dollars at. To, cause some other department have to cut a hundred thousand dollars out of their budget to make the whole. Presentation to the town and to get back to pass, and, uh, you know, some years are better than others, some years. Uh, valuation goes up quite a bit, um. You know, in many years it doesn't, but you, you know, you gotta look at the entire picture for. Setting money aside, um. And perhaps what our, our recommendation to the Board of Finance could be, would be, we strongly suggest you. Put as much money as you can into the reserve, and, you know, let their financial minds. Go around that one to see, you know, with the same explanation of what we had tonight, but that reserve is there and what it's used for.
Yeah, I, I, and ultimately they can decide to choose to do whatever they want with this, um, so. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I still, I think we should put money in there and present that case to them, um, but. It's six, one, a dozen together at this point, I'm getting tired.
I would like to find out how we arrived at the thirty-one thousand dollar number.
We arrived at a thirty-one thousand dollars because.
I'm sorry, I didn't ask you.
Were you asking?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't ask you, I, I'm sorry that I did not ask you, I'm sorry.
That is because, um, Peter and Christina met after our last meeting, and. Peter said I'd like to have a seven percent increase in my budget for spending on local. So, we backed into the thirty-one thousand, that's the amount that was left to bring us to exactly a seven percent increase in local.
And, and, and that's the bigger concern, I think, is that. We're backing into what we want our taxes to look like, not how to address the need, which is what this committee needs to start doing. And, you know, that, that's fine, if it's not gonna get it, if it's not gonna pass, I, you know, I think this committee should be. More aggressively recommending that we do more to try to get ahead of the game, but. If it's gonna go in the right direction.
You know, the, the number of charters and there are bunches of them are out there specializing that. That's typically how they start, they work backwards, how much can I afford? And, you know, what is acceptable to the taxpayers, what do we think we can fund, and then. Balance your expenses that way, but it doesn't base, it's not based on need at that point, it's based on. Uh, financial prudence or, you know, salesmanship, whatever you wanna call it, and when the needs are higher, they are unmet. But when they aim for a certain percentage, that's as much as you can afford.
And I go back to which of these projects do you tell the town or the departments we're not gonna fund?
So I think that goes back to master planning, strategic planning, whatever you wanna call it. And present a comprehensive plan to the taxpayers that says this is what our town is going to look like. If these projects don't get funded, if these projects do get funded, and then it's not our decision, it's their decision. I mean, it's. It's our decision also as we were there, but like, that it becomes a, a conversation, and it's not us thinking what is best for everybody else. I want a whole mess of stuff done, but, but I'm just one person. So, I, I would love to recommend pie in the sky, but I, I feel like. I wanna recommend cautiously because I want stuff to get done, and not just swept off the table because it's too much.
Well, I, the only objection I make to that is we're not recommending pie in the sky. We're, 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 it looks like a big increase, but it's barely, it's not even a debt, so.
Well, I, I, I want to welcome you to remember the conversation about the board that budget. Very, very modest increase. And most of it was legal, and it's. A big discussion, so I feel like. We have to take the pulse unfortunately, and not decide for people, but understand, like, reading the room. And, and advocating for what we believe in, but still being realistic and understanding that there's only so much that. Is going to be able to get done, and I'm a big fan of doing the two through five and having it on paper, right? Like, having meetings about it and, and helping to steer things in a direction as opposed to this, oh, well, it's year one again, let's. Figure out what we're gonna cut, like, that's, doesn't make sense to me either, Jen, but unfortunately, that's where we are right now. Unfortunately.
Well, we've got through this list, at least for year one, um. The only, you know, again, the only thing I'd say that I think would be prudent is related to refunding the fire stations, but. We're not gonna have that discussion again, um. Or at least the need that we know is gonna happen for well to come on. But we'll push that out a year, my only fear is that they're gonna come across something that needs funds sooner, um, then we're not gonna have it, but. We can always vote that in later. I just. Yeah, I, I. It's just frustrating, I don't mean to, you know, have that portrayed outwardly as much as I probably do, um, but I'm. You know, it's, it's, I, I look at this as a. John Anne problem that we don't make inroads at, or we don't. I have, I, I'll stop talking, because I don't wanna say something on the clock that, like, that gets misconstrued again, um. You know, I just, I, I worry.
How many people are in this meeting? Like.
That's the problem, I can't see. I can stop here, because we don't need to share this, and we can see the whole room.
There's three, other than board members.
So there's three people in this meeting who are listening to us debating the future planning of the town, so. I, I didn't, admittedly, it's nine twenty-two, but whatever, I feel like. We need, we need to advertise our services, I feel like people need to be participating in this. And, and having a conversation with us about what they want to see in the town. Um, not just voting yes or no at the, at the, not just voting no at the voting booth. Um, and I think that takes, that's gonna take some work on. Our part perhaps, other people's parts.
So, let's do, uh, do things here, um.
Before we go where I think you're gonna go, do we need to approve this tonight? A year one, or is it just, this is the budget as it stands now? And we can have a conversation with Christina, we can have a conversation with Pete and approve the whole plan, hopefully, then a week or two before Christina presents. His plan and follow for the Board of Finance on the fourteen.
I think we need to approve at least year one, too.
I, 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 I disagree.
That was, I believe, based on the request of the slot plan that. They, they.
But he doesn't have an approved budget himself.
If I, Stuart, if I may, um, just a reminder, it's on the agenda for Board of Finance for Thursday for Pete to present his budget, and he has to present a number. So he's gonna present some number. Um, and, uh, then it's supposed to be back on his selectman's agenda on Monday again, so. Uh, just pointing out, he's, he's hoping for something, he made it pretty clear last week.
Well, we, we figured out year one.
Yeah.
I hesitate to agree to, like, to. You know, I'm, I'm not approving, well. You know, I'll play along for you, I won't forget it, cause this is gonna be a deeper conversation.
So, I believe Pete does need and want the year one, uh, suggestions. Uh, for, uh, from CIP, and, uh, that we should have. Approved this tonight, so he can take it and do whatever he wants with, uh, tomorrow, and, uh. And go from there, I think we've, uh. You know, so we'd love to have more conversation about this, I think year one is the best that we can do right now. And the other issues are much bigger structural systemic issues that need to be looked at.
So, we made changes to Pete's budget, um. Are we comfortable voting to approve it and giving it to him formally?
Well, he can change it back.
Yeah, then why are we approving?
We're recommending, we're recommending stuff to him.
Yeah, you, you have the board, the board of selectmen can make any changes they want, um. And historically, there's generally been minor changes. Uh, either from the selectmen or the Board of Finance, they have made changes in the past, uh, they obviously have the right to do so in the future, but. They generally follow what is presented to them, uh. So I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve the year one budget as modified tonight, uh. For a presentation to the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Any discussion?
I disagree with the notion that we should be approving year one and year two through five budgets separately. But I understand the need, but I do wanna note, a formal objection to this motion, even though the board has on it.
I'm sure the secretary will be accurate, no, reflect the same. Uh, so I got a motion in a second, all in favor of approving the year one budget, so the aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Whoops, the motion carries. Um, item five on the agenda, years two through five, I'd like to make a motion that we defer this to next. Scheduled meeting, I believe it's next one, it's good.
Second.
Unless you really wanna see tonight, I don't think anyone's. Having it within us to, uh, do that.
Well, I think we've done a lot of discussion about years two, three, four.
Yeah, um. So I have a motion in a second to defer the CIP years two through five that was on the agenda to our next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Take the drag in for another.
That doesn't matter, I, I.
No, I'm sorry, I value your input and, uh, like, hope we're here for the discussion, and. You know, like you, somebody else mentioned tonight, it would be good to have some Board of Finance input. Earlier on than later, but, uh, that's up to them to how they, you know, handle things, they may get more interest as presented to them. Tomorrow night. Any other items that they come up with for the committee?
Um, no, we can talk about how we handle things moving forward next week or week after.
Yeah, I believe it's next week, um, it's what the, uh, the agenda maker Christina had set out. So we'll make sure that gets emailed out to you, um. And we'll go from there. Anybody else online? And once, by twice, uh, ready, and make a motion to adjourn, fifteen one?
Second.
All in favor of adjourn, say aye.
Thank you, ladies. Uh, do I have the headset recording? Yes.